5:42 PM and today is Thursday, October 2nd. I'm going to call the special city council meeting to order. Will the city secretary please call roll?
Mitchell? Hyzer?
Here.
Rizzo?
Present.
Zuniga?
Harris?
Here.
McKinney?
Here.
Tobias?
Present.
Okay, five members present. We have a quorum. Up next is citizen comment. Is there? I have two forms. And we will first call up Kenneth Rocha.
Good evening, council. This is a really great event and I really do appreciate y'all hosting it and coming together to do this. I'm going to read to make sure I don't miss anything. I'm Kenneth Rocha, hometown Kyle. So I'm here to speak about feasibility and the roundabout first policy, including section thirty-eight dash twenty-three of city ordinance. In reviewing all the shared documents provided by the city, it does not provide evidence of a traffic control study or comprehensive feasibility analysis for each of the twelve planned intersections. We understand and appreciate the clear generic national statistics safety benefits of a roundabout. However, feasibility is more about just reducing conflict points. It's about performance-based evaluation, right sizing, operational fit, and the appropriateness designed for site-specific needs. The city's planning documents state that the key task is to determine best intersection type for each location, a T, a cross, or a roundabout. This suggests a case-by-case evaluation for each location. Yet we are proceeding with twelve new planned roundabouts, raising the concern that the choice is driven by policy, not by individual intersection data. The criteria emphasized in the workshop focus heavily on traffic capacity and aesthetics. Regarding road design review, so Kyle Fire Department, ESD number five, doesn't review public roadway designs, but instead the city of Kyle's transportation engineering department is primarily responsible for ensuring the design accommodates fire apparatus on public roads, which adopts the national standard for roundabout design, which is NCHRP report six-seven-two. We know Hayes County, ESD five, Kyle, number five, Kyle Fire Department reviews private drive roads and commercial development projects for IFC compliance to ensure their largest apparatus, their ladder truck, Quint twenty-one, which is thirty-six feet, two inches long, fits and functions effectively within the designs they review. We want to avoid another mistake where the design and construction of a roundabout fails to include our fire department's requirements like the Go Fourth Road and Button Creek roundabout, which had to be corrected and retrofitted to meet turning radius compliance. If the city is truly committed to determining the best intersection type, share the objective data that justifies a roundabout to include site-specific incident history, emergency service operational review, traffic capacity to include largest freight design vehicle functionality, and of course, cost differences. All of these should serve as a primary input, not just compliance checks after the design is already chosen. I'm looking forward to seeing what information is offered today. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Rocha. Up next, we have Michelle Geis.
Good evening. This isn't about the roundabout. This is about housing, trauma, and disabilities. My name is Michelle Geis. I live here in Kyle. And I've fought battles where I shouldn't be standing here in front of y'all today. I'm a survivor. I'm here because I've seen and lived along with so many other survivors of domestic violence, bullying, sexual assault, incarceration, street war, complex PTSD trauma. Living here in Kyle with you. Many are parents with disabilities, raising children with disabilities. Veterans and first responders carry PTSD as well. We are all survivors of war in different ways, yet we are all denied housing and healing. Bad credit, old evictions, repossession, keep families out of stable, safe housing. Without housing, families are homeless. When compounded with mental health challenges, families are torn apart. Children's are separated from their homes and either end up dead or they end up in prison. Families are torn from, families given them choices on who they could talk to, who they could see, and your loved ones might end up going somewhere else and leaving you. Because they are the ones who are giving you shelter and they are giving us a choice on who we can speak to. So housing isn't survival without being able to heal and go and have dignity for yourself. Beyond housing, there are many programs here in Kyle, but there isn't. I've tried every single place where I keep getting two-on-one. I've called. I've tried calling the different places. I can't get anyone to help me and that's been over a year. Beyond housing, there are no programs, just like I said, that are actually helping. I'm not going to call over or speak to a therapist about anything that I've been through because that's my life and that's my kid's life and anyone who I know because of what I've seen and what I went through. So talking to a therapist and doctors that's never been through any of the trauma, they can't, they have no idea of what I've been through. They're not on my level. So it won't, it doesn't even affect them. They just think I'm crazy. And they judge.
Thank you for giving us these. We appreciate it. All right, is there anyone else who wishes to come forward to speak? All right, seeing none, we will close citizen comments. And up next, we will have item number one. Receiver report, hold a discussion, and provide staff direction regarding an overview of the roundabout design, safety consideration, and uses in the 2022 city of Kyle road bond programs. Mr. Tremble.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. Evening, Mayor Potem and Council. Mike Tremble, I'm the Director of Transportation and Public Works. And tonight, we're going to provide an overview of the roundabouts program for the 2022 road bond program. And so I know there's been a lot of discussion and questions about the roundabouts, how they work, how they function, the benefits. And so that's really what tonight is for, is to provide some of that information. We are building twelve roundabouts as part of the road bond program. And so we'll be covering some of the basics about why roundabouts, why would you do these, and talk about the mobility and safety aspects of those. Talk about some of those rules for how to use roundabouts. We'll also be talking about some of the design considerations when you're developing these, whether it's pedestrian considerations, driver considerations. And then we'll talk specifically about those roundabouts that we're doing within the bond program and talk about, you know, because each of them are unique for a given context. And we'll talk about those different contexts in the road bond program. And then we'll answer any questions that you may have. To lead us in the presentation tonight, we have the team from American Structure Point. American Structure Point has the role in the bond program to provide guidelines, standards review, and quality assurance for our roundabouts program, for the bond program. And so with that, I will turn it over to Structure Point and Mike McBride, I think is leading us off. Mike?
Thank you, Mike. And thank you all for the invitation to be here to speak with you today. I am Mike McBride. I'm a vice president and partner at American Structure Point. In my role, and really not just at Structure Point, but throughout my career, my focus and really passion even has been in advising local governments on ways that they might enhance safety and livability in their communities through the built environment. And much of that focus is in the public right of way. It's one of the largest land masses that really any community can influence. So I guess I'd just like to say to start that I acknowledge and give you all credit for what you've done in implementing and adopting a capital improvement plan and then moving forward that capital improvement plan and investing in your public transportation system to improve safety and livability of your community. There's no question that that investment is going to pay dividends and improve safety and quality of life for your community for decades to come. So kudos. I have a couple of my colleagues here with me today. I want to just give a moment to introduce them right now and then you'll see them later again in this presentation. Hardik, you want to introduce yourself real quick?
Yeah, thank you, Mike. Hardik Shah, again with American Structure Point. I'm a traffic engineer and a safety expert by trade. Have been doing this for twenty years and a proud builder maker as well. So I just wanted to put that out there. And again, I think our experience dealing with enhancing safety, as Mike pointed out, I think that is really one of the biggest thing that I am particularly passionate about as well, to make sure how can we make our roadway infrastructure safer and better for all modes of transportation, not just vehicles, but vehicles and pads and bikes and everyone who actually uses the system. So. Then I'll turn it over to Steve.
Steve Wodaki, I'm a senior project manager with American Structure Point, and I am actively involved in two of the road bond projects. Number one is a prime, we are designing the BB Road project, have responsible design for four of the roundabouts in the program or the intersection improvements. And then we are also a sub on another project, which is the Lehman Road and Kyle Parkway project, and we are designing three of the four roundabouts there. So I have responsible design for seven of the roundabouts in the bond program. Next is Nick Murphy.
Nick Murphy, I've got fifteen years' experience designing, advising, reviewing over a hundred roundabouts, all shapes and sizes, from interstates to local municipalities, including geometric review of the roundabouts we're going to see tonight as part of the bond program.
So I know this community has received quite an education in recent years on the benefits of roundabouts. And I'm going to ask that you just bear with us for a little bit. We're going to take a little quick refresher course so that we are reminded why roundabouts are being considered on transportation systems, not just here in Kyle, but across the country and across the world. And that's not just American Structure Point's opinion. That is the opinion of our federal highway administration, the US DOT, numerous DOT, state DOTs across the country, as well as municipalities just like yourselves. This is a clip that goes back about fifteen years from a video talking about the benefits of roundabouts that Federal Highway put out back in those early days to try to help communities understand why roundabouts should be an option that's considered.
Did you know that more than twenty people are killed and many more are seriously injured in crashes at intersections every day in the United States? Did you know that most of these deaths and injuries are due to right-angle crashes that occur at signalized and stop-controlled intersections? How much time do you spend stopped at a red light waiting for the light to change when there was no traffic on the cross street? Did you know there is an intersection alternative that is substantially safer than signalized and stop-controlled intersections and much more efficient? The US DOT's Federal Highway Administration, FHWA, has identified modern roundabout intersections as one of nine proven lifesaving roadway safety strategies.
So safety, right? The number one reason that roundabouts should be considered as an alternative when considering intersection improvements in any community. Let's quantify that. I know we've talked probably numerous times about this, but oftentimes I'm questioned when folks learn what I do for a living, why are we doing roundabouts still? So I think it's important to just keep repeating, it's a ninety percent reduction in fatalities when roundabouts are placed instead of a signal-controlled intersection. So again, there are multiple sources that have studied this over the years. The Insurance Institute for Highway Safety was one of the early organizations that recognized the benefits of roundabouts and kind of the indirect benefits to their industry. Numerous studies over the years have shown that ninety percent reduction in fatalities, seventy-five percent reduction in injury crashes, and forty percent reduction in all crashes. Not to mention the efficiency benefits and fuel savings that the community realizes when those roundabouts are installed instead of traffic signals. uh, when those roundabouts are installed instead of traffic signals. Why are roundabouts safer? Geometrically, they produce fewer conflict points. So a conflict point is just the pat- a point at which two vehicles have an opportunity to intersect. Uh, there are 32 conflict points in a signalized intersection versus eight in a roundabout. So just right out of the gate, we've got fewer opportunities for crashes. The roundabout also produces a lower speed traffic environment and produces a less severe impact angle for all eight of those conflict points. This is just an exhibit of, of how that happens. You've got more of an angular glancing kind of a crash at a roundabout versus a, a T-bone crash at a traditional signalized intersection. So how does a roundabout produce that lower speed environment? Well, it's by intentional design. As your engineers work towards the improvement of an intersection and a roundabout is chosen in that evaluation process, the design is carefully then considered to control the path, uh, the speed of the path of all the vehicles passing through that intersection. Here's just a diagram that shows, uh, kind of the speed targets, um, that we're looking at as a maximum when we're designing a roundabout so that we could control that fastest path, if you will, for any vehicle movement through the intersection. Here I'm going to transition to Hardik. We're going to talk just a little bit about, that's kind of the end of the, the very basic stuff. We're going to get into a little bit more of the rules of roundabouts and what the state of Texas is doing in recent years to embrace and, and incorporate roundabouts into their transportation program.
Thank you, Mike. So again, I, I think as we, as we think about roundabouts in general, I think what is, uh, Texas actually doing? I just want to maybe point out one thing. Texas DOT, uh, has actually taken a very bold stance, uh, as a state to really look at roundabout, uh, overall as a program that can be looked, uh, for the entire state. Two years back, I think, uh, we were actually approached by the leadership at Texas DOT to really conduct a workshop similar to, I think, what we are doing today. And that was really driven more in terms of bringing all their engineering leadership from all the different districts, uh, to really help kind of like embrace and understand, uh, the benefits of why you want to go after maybe a safer intersection control. And I think one thing, uh, it, it is, uh, it is very, uh, uh, known as, as you saw in the early slide that we had, that Texas as a state has a tagline, uh, hashtag and the streak Texas. And I think what that means is, uh, really Texas as a state is pushing for, uh, Vision Zero, which means that, uh, looking for zero deaths on our roadways. And I think one thing from Federal Highway as well as US DOT that everyone has recognized over the years that roundabouts are one way of really helping us get there, and I think we can get there faster. Uh, they are not the right solution everywhere, but the locations where it makes sense. And if it is done through the right planning process, it actually does work and it can help reduce the fatalities, which is really the number one goal. So, uh, I, I think this is a video that, uh, Texas DOT, uh, actually ended up putting together. Again, some of the things that Mike actually went through, you're going to see that. But this is a great tool in the toolbox. And again, kudos to City of Kyle for really looking out for the Vision Zero aspect for the community. I think Texas DOT, uh, has a lot of roadways that basically goes through the city as well. And they could be an additional resource that I think the city can actually use as, as the community keeps on growing as well. So we just wanted to maybe point out what Texas as a state is doing and how I think it can benefit, uh, the City of Kyle as well, so.
Roundabouts can seem kind of foreign to a lot of Texas drivers. I mean, in Texas, you might have stop signs or stop lights or, I don't know, yield signs or no signs at all. But we've had roundabouts in Texas for decades, hundreds of them, urban, rural, for cars, trucks, trailers. Roundabouts work surprisingly well in Texas. Here's why. On any road, you can imagine the paths that vehicles might take. And anywhere these paths touch, you get a conflict, a potential crash. A four-way intersection has 32 conflict points. And the worst kind of conflicts, the T-bone and head-on crashes, they're all crammed right there in the middle. Roundabouts avoid these severe conflict points by going around them. And when we imagine the roundabout paths, there we go, we get eight conflict points from 32 down to eight. And none of these conflict points are the super bad kind. So even if there is a crash, it's a rear end or side to side crash, which tend to be less severe. In fact, a study of non-roundabouts that were later converted to roundabouts found that crashes went down 47% and crashes with injuries went down 80%. And they're surprisingly simple to drive. You slow down, yield to vehicles already in the circle and go when there's an opening. And this is the genius of a roundabout because drivers are constantly exiting and entering, which means openings are constantly being created. Watch for it next time you're at a roundabout. A vehicle exits, which creates an opening for a vehicle that enters. And that vehicle eventually creates another opening on and on. It's like a perpetual motion machine. Even when the power's out, it just runs itself. Look at it go. Even that truck with its big trailer. Roundabouts have a center curb for when it needs a little extra road for turning. They've thought of everything in here. These are smart intersections. In fact, a study of roundabout intersections found that they reduced delays by 65%. I know, it's pretty impressive. Roundabouts are a safe, efficient and not so foreign option for Texas drivers. Learn more about roundabouts and other ways that text dot is connecting you with Texas at text dot gov.
So again, I know, uh, that video had a lot of information, but it's, it's pretty basic, uh, simplified. That can actually help, uh, anytime you are going through maybe public involvement on any of the projects. One other thing that is really important is, is really the rules of the roundabouts. And again, it's not rocket science. It's very similar to as you're navigating through maybe a traditional conventional intersection where, uh, if you're, if you're traveling through and you want to turn left, you're going to stay in the left lane. If you want to turn right, you're going to stay in the right lane. I think you're going to look for the signage. It's no different with roundabouts as well. And I think that's another important educational component, uh, that I think really makes, makes a huge difference when communities that are actually newer to, uh, going out for safer intersection control like roundabouts, uh, such as what you guys are doing here in, in Kyle. So again, just wanted to play a quick video, uh, which, uh, comes from again Federal Highway and US DOT that really talks about the rules of the roundabout to really make it very simplified. Three basic rules, slow down, yield, uh, to the vehicle coming in the circulating lane, uh, and, and look around and mainly you're looking only in one direction. You're looking to your left as you are trying to, uh, accept a gap, so.
If you travel around the United States, there's a good chance you've gone through a modern roundabout recently. They're saving lives on our nation's roads because they reduce severe crashes at intersections by an average of 80%. But do you know the rules of the roundabout? The rules are pretty simple and easy to remember. Slow down, look around and be ready to yield. When you approach a roundabout, slow down. Going slower gives you more time to make decisions and you'll be ready to yield to other road users. Next, look around. If there's more than one lane leading to the roundabout, you'll need to choose the proper lane for where you want to go after the roundabout. Take note of the signs and markings to help you select your lane. Like most other intersections, use the left lane to go left, the right lane to go right and either lane to go straight through unless otherwise indicated. Keep looking around and check the crosswalks to see if anyone is waiting to cross or is already crossing. Be ready to stop and let them safely finish. When the crosswalk is clear, look around for traffic already in the roundabout. Then be ready to yield. You must yield to traffic in all lanes of the roundabout, not just the lane closest to you. Remember, yielding means letting others go first and stopping when necessary. Enter when there's a comfortable gap. Remember to go slow and stay in your lane. Don't turn left from the right lane and don't turn right from the left lane. If you see any large vehicles like trucks or buses, give them space and avoid driving next to them inside the roundabout. As you leave the roundabout, follow the pavement markings to stay in the correct lane. Look around one more time for anyone in the crosswalk and be ready to yield to them as you exit. That's it. So next time you're at a roundabout, make sure to follow these simple rules. Slow down, look around, be ready to yield.
So again, I think, uh, a lot of this, uh, is, is something that has already been factored into, uh, the planning process that, that we go through when we are looking at, uh, designing or thinking about roundabout, whether it's the right context, right location. And, uh, that is exactly what has been done, uh, with, uh, with the bond program, with, with all the different roundabouts that are being planned. But again, at a very high level, uh, just wanted to maybe cover a few things. What you are looking for is, uh, anytime you have a given intersection control, there is a lot of land use, economic impact, density around the area that might actually result in why you're going to see an increase in traffic. And I think what you do is you're looking at projecting, uh, or forecasting traffic in future to make sure you're designing for the added capacity that will be needed. And as you go through that process, uh, uh, again, what Texas DOT actually has a program, which is called, uh, the Roundabouts and Innovative Intersection Design Guide. And what they do is it's really going through and vetting through the process to figure out, uh, is, is a stop controlled the right solution at a location? Is if that's not the case, it's creating congestion? Do we need to look for signals? Do we need to really account for, uh, heavy directional turning movements? And again, a lot of this is really going to be more context specific. So that's what I think we really, uh, put it into what I call it as maybe the traffic modeling. There are also, uh, some rule of thumbs in terms of the capacities, uh, that the roundabout, uh, single lane roundabout has cer- have certain capacities. The dual lane, multi-lane roundabouts have, have different capacities. Steve is actually going to touch on that as we really get into the Kyle specific, uh, program here in, here in a few minutes. But the, the point here is you're looking out for different features. And I think trying to make sure that we are also trying to accommodate for the pads and the bikes. And I know, uh, the example here on the screen is actually one of the projects in the bond program where there happens to be a school in the vicinity of this location. And that was a consideration that was taken into account as you are looking for the right design and the right solution, uh, for the intersection control and making sure how we can accommodate those, uh, school, uh, school pedestrian, uh, movements, uh, navigating through, through the intersection. And I think, uh, maybe with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to Mike to talk a little bit more about the pedestrian, uh, features as well on roundabout.
Thanks, Eddie. So definitely, uh, the consideration for the number of pedestrians anticipated within the intersection is a, is a major design factor. How those crosswalks are treated, then to make sure that we can best ensure the safety of the pedestrians when they're crossing, rolls into the evaluation of the process, the, the intersection design as well. So in typical, uh, just like with vehicles, um, pedestrians experience fewer conflict points at a roundabout than they do at a traditional intersection. They also benefit from that lower speed environment that the roundabout creates. So this is a pretty somber slide, but talks about the survivability rate at varying vehicle speeds, uh, when a pedestrian does come in conflict with the vehicle. Uh, I think that's, uh, a pretty sobering statistic and it's been proven, uh, across numerous studies. So, um, something to be aware of when you're evaluating the benefit of that lower speed environment. The City of Kyle is at their crosswalks using a rectangular rapid flashing beacon. Uh, this is a picture of one of those that you see here on the left of your screen. It's a essentially just a high intensity amber flashing beacon. It alternates blinking left to right, grabs the driver, approaching driver's attention, slows them down and makes them aware of the fact that a pedestrian is crossing. Those are pedestrian actuated, so they are dark most of the time until a pedestrian pushes the button and then they light up to let the driver know, uh, that there is a, a pedestrian in the area. As pedestrian volumes increase at intersections, uh, specifically roundabouts, you may want to consider further enhancements and there are multiple options out there. I'm mentioning that because these pictures are, are actually from the City of Carmel, Indiana, where they have been retrofitted with raised crosswalks. So, uh, the, the crosswalk has been reconstructed as a, a trapezoidal shaped, flat topped, um, crossings so that the vehicle has to go over about a three inch rise to go over that crosswalk. So, uh, what we found in, in adding those, uh, where we had these really intense pedestrian volumes is that it just further dropped the average vehicle speed within the intersection. So plenty of enhancements that could be considered as, as time goes on and traffic and pedestrian volumes increase over time. Lighting is also a major con- concern or of consideration in the, uh, design of a roundabout. It alerts approaching drivers that this is an alternate type of intersection, that there is not a straight path through the intersection available to them. So it helps lower their speed again on approach. Uh, we also want to be very conscientious of where we place those lights in, in relation to where the pedestrian crossings are, um, so that we put the light on the pedestrian in a way that maximizes the visibility to an approaching driver. Also, a lot of, a lot of, uh, attention gets paid to the signage. It's a standardized signage package, uh, that's adopted both at the, the state and federal level. This is an example, uh, that you'll see of the signage package and striping that will be incorporated in the roundabouts here in Kyle. A lot of those, probably you've seen in other places. You've got a roundabout head sign. As you get closer, you get the lane indication signage and striping that reinforces what lane you're supposed to choose as you approach the roundabout. Then you'll get a pedestrian crossing treatment. Then you come to the yield sign. And then right at that yield sign, you're going to notice one further reinforcement of the direction of travel with one-way signage in the center island, which indicates that counterclockwise direction of traffic flow. So I know this seems very, very basic, but I think that gets us through the refresher course on, on roundabouts, why we're doing roundabouts and how to appropriately navigate through a roundabout. Now we're going to get into the design checklist portion of the discussion. So this is the evaluation process that we went through with each one of these, uh, roundabouts that's proposed here in Kyle and is, is being, uh, incorporated now in the design. And we're going to have Steve come up and expand on that a little bit.
Thank you, Mike. Uh, again, Steve Wodaki, Senior Project Manager and actually working on two of your road bond projects, BB Road, as well as Lehman and Kyle Crossing. I gave you this handout because on the, uh, screen there, they're a little hard to see. But one of the things that is done in the design of every one of these roundabouts prior to, you know, even laying the things out, we do a traffic engineering analysis at each of the locations. And what that does as far as the scopes that were performed for each of the roadways in the bond program was we were made to look at whether or not a conventional intersection design would work and also compared it to an innovative, uh, intersection design or the roundabouts at each of those locations. So I'll get into that a little bit more when we get into the detailed looks at the individual roundabouts here in a second. But those ended up because each one of these intersections yielded the need for a roundabout. We have a 30-step checklist that we look at for each one of these roundabouts as we go through the design process. We're looking at them in the preliminary engineering stage before we even start looking at the plans to go to, uh, develop for construction. Look at all of the 30, 60, 90 and 100% submittal stages to make sure that all of these elements, we have roadway design manual, which is a text dot manual. They have a specific section on roundabouts. You've heard this, uh, INTERP manual mentioned numerous times. There are a number of features that we look at. Capacity analysis, fastest path, which y'all saw the, uh, uh, exhibit previously where all the speeds are about 20 to 25 miles an hour. What are those? Those are about school zone speeds, right? So we're taking the speeds down in every one of these intersections. But this tool is used to evaluate and review every one of those roundabouts in this program. All right, so let's talk about y'all's specific roundabouts. We're not going to look at absolutely every one of them, but we've taken several of them that fit in the categories. And when you go back in the back, they're kind of grouped by the typical roundabout configurations that they assumed. And again, it's based on the approach roadways. And again, it's based on the approach roadways. All right, so roundabout capacity and modeling. I just talked about the traffic analysis that was done for every one of these roundabouts. We looked at the build year, which is projected out based on when it's expected to be built. And then we also go 20 years out from that. That is called the design year, the 20 year forecast that we're looking at. So each of these roundabouts or each of these intersections was initially looked at as a standard, whether it's a cross intersection or a T, and whether or not that performed better even than a roundabout. And what we found in the analysis on the two projects that I've been involved in is that every one of the conventional intersections failed in the ultimate build out year in that 20 year projection. So it's a level of service F. It's kind of like grading a paper. A is good, F is bad. The worst results we saw on any of the roundabouts in the projects that I was involved in was a level of service C in the 20 year forecasted build year. So the roundabouts themselves in each of these locations performed better than a conventional intersection. So I'm responsible for several that are cross intersections, several that would have otherwise been T intersections, and the roundabouts just performed better and they're safer. So you can see some of the statistics up here. A single lane roundabout puts through about 25,000 vehicles per day, a two lane roundabout of 40,000 vehicles per day. And as people get better at driving them, those numbers actually will go up. So a lot of the roundabout designs, as Hardik mentioned, they're heavily dependent on turning movement percentages. And I'll show you some of the unique features in these roundabouts relative to that. Another thing that can be done is you can have staged construction. So in the build year, maybe you don't put all the features out there, but as you progress into the future, you come back and put in some additional features that ultimately make that roundabout perform at the level that it should. So your typical rule of thumb for single lane volume approaches is about 1,100 to 1,200 vehicles per hour. So again, as we mentioned, those turning movements are critical. So let's get into some of the roundabouts themselves. All right, so here are the locations of all of your 12 roundabouts in the road bond program. We have some at Center, Old Stagecoach, let's see, Coler's Seaton, BB Road at Dacey Lane, BB Road at, and I'm not familiar with the new lane of the roadway, we called it Go For South. We'll have the correct name here in a minute. And another one is at Go For North. We have them at Kyle Parkway at Dacey, Lehman Road at Dacey, Kyle Parkway at Lehman Road, and then Lehman Road at Button Creek Road, and then another one further to the east on Button Creek Road. So they are in multiple areas and they're on practically every one of your road bond programs. The only one that doesn't have it is Marketplace, but the city is contemplating a roundabout at the Marketplace and Coler's Crossing intersection in the future. All right. First one we want to look at is the Dacey Lane at BB Road intersection. And this is one of the ones that's in my project and I'm responsible for the design of this one. And it's an intersection of a high level collector Dacey Lane and a low level arterial BB Road. So it's your typical two by two configuration. That means the approach directions on each roadway. It's a two lane approach and it occurs on all four legs of the intersection. And in the analysis of this design, to make sure that it worked with all of the features that are out there today, you have Science Hall Elementary. You can see the driveways, all of the driveways into the school still work the same. The bus paths still work the same, so we did not change anything with the exception of the intersection itself. We even were able to work with a convenience store at the southwest corner, got everybody else's driveways put back in place. And I think it's going to end up. One of the other features that we looked at is in the traffic control. While this is being built, we made sure that all of the pedestrian crossings will work in all phases of construction. So you can have crossing guards out there getting the kids across the street at this intersection throughout the entirety of the construction.
Steve, can I interrupt you there for a minute? So going back to that picture right there, making sure, so something you brought up earlier, and I'm a big fan of it as well, something I've really have been trying to champion is the raised walkways. Colored raised walkways are going to be important there with the schools being there with the kids. I think it'll reduce the speed from 25 to 15 actually with the raised walkway there. So it'll definitely be an improvement there for the kids walking around. And every speed that, every five miles that we reduce that speed is going to be important. So I think a raised walkway there is going to be great. Make sure that it's colored. The color really highlights the raised walkway and really slows people down. Seen it work in real life in Indiana, so I think this would be a perfect place to put that in your school.
Okay, so some of the things that we have going on here, you know, you saw the rectangular rapid flashing beacons. At every one of these legs, we're going to have them. You're still going to have your school zone signage, so it's going to be 20 miles an hour when school is in session during those periods in the morning and the afternoon when kids are getting out. You're still going to have your crossing guards at every one of these intersections. So whatever it's been done today is still going to be done in the future. The only thing that's going to change is the intersection footprint. So you'll still have those lower speeds when the kids are in school because the school zones themselves will be in effect. So you still get that benefit of the school zones themselves.
And I do get that, but unfortunately, right now, people are running the speeds in our school zones. They're not doing 25, they're doing 35. Anything we can do to put in these areas to try to slow people down will be just a benefit for the kids is what we're looking at.
Yeah, council member. And so one of the things we're going to do, in addition to all the base improvements that we're making with these roundabouts, is we're going to be evaluating the performance even after that. And so, you know, if we need to put additional like raised crosswalks, there might even be some speed tables at certain locations. Again, depending on the pet volumes, depending on any conflicts that we see, we'll continue to do that evaluation even after these are put in place. So as Steve's mentioning, we're putting in kind of a base set of improvements for safety, but if we need to make additional improvements, we'll look at that and evaluate that as we move forward.
And one of the other points is that, you know, we mentioned the geometrics. They physically require you to slow down. You cannot, we talk about fastest path, that's one of the critical analyses that's in this checklist as well. It's going to drop those speeds down to the speeds you saw in that diagram. So they're going to get there. I think that's, that's one of the things you can have.
And I understand that part of it. I knew that it was going to drop you down to about 25, but I was thinking with the raised elevations, it'd probably drop you down to 15. I mean, every opportunity we give those kids a safe way to cross the street is really important to me. I don't know how many walkers we have in that area. I know it's pretty dense there, but I'm thinking about Lehman High School, how we've got more kids walking there. I don't know if we've got a lot of walkers here at this school, but making sure we take the evaluations into account, see what the numbers are and make sure we're doing everything we can to keep our kids safe. I'd rather do it ahead of time than wait till later and wait and see. That's what I'm, do it. I'll believe construction should happen all at once, not in sections or in pockets because then it's a headache for parents when they're trying to get their kids to school in the future.
If you don't mind, I'd like to add real quick, that same area, Council Rizzo hits a good point, especially right in that area. I live there and also used to drive down near Chappa Middle School. There is a large amount of foot traffic that's there because you have some apartments that are down the road. And we've worked with Ryan and them down the road to be able to have safe crosswalks. That's really a lot of the concerns that residents had in my district, including at Lehman, was mainly the pedestrian traffic that's there, especially in the evening. If we're, I mean, we're going to eventually hit Lehman and Bunton, but that's, that's the main concern is really the pedestrian traffic for students and so forth. Because once that crossing guard is gone after 4:30, you're going to have still some kids that are going to malingo around. So they're going to need to be able to have that safety feature there, which I know that you're working on designs for that. So that's good to hear. Thank you.
Yeah. And one of the things to come back to as well, you know, at your conventional intersection, what do you have? You have the push button pedestrian crossings. That rapid flashing beacon has the same feature. It's, you have the push button there, so it actuates it and allows it to go into effect. And then again, as Mike mentioned earlier, the nature of the roundabout is as you cross, rather than having to look in both directions, there are pedestrian refuges in these islands to where as they cross one leg, they only have to look in one direction. Cross, they hit that pedestrian refuge from there, they go to the other one and they look the other way. So that's one of the unique design features of these types of intersections that it has that added benefit. You're not having to look at what's happening in both directions. You treat them one at a time. It's a great safety feature.
Steve, can I just add one thing real quick? So I think what, appreciate the feedback there. I think as Mike mentioned as well, this is the part where it's more context specific. So making sure that yes, as a community, that's pedestrian heavy movement, take that into account, into consideration. But I think to Mike's point, is this going to be happening at each and every roundabout location in the city of Kyle? And I think the answer would be no. I think it is more to make sure that it's context specific. And as community, I think as you continue to mature, add more pedestrian activities because of development, or maybe have additional traffic, then I think those features can actually be looked into. But the way they are designed, they will certainly help to make sure that you can, from an operations and maintenance perspective over a period of time, O and M, I think you can certainly look at that from a capital budget down the road, but you don't have to put that upfront as well.
Yeah, I wasn't talking about all of them. So just, I'm sorry if I gave that misunderstanding, but no, I was thinking more about the two schools that we have. And then if we've got a high traffic on Coler's, look at that one. But really, it was the two schools that really concerned me, the kids going through there. And as Councilmember Tobio said, you know, we've got people in the evenings going through there as well, making sure that we keep those people safe is my biggest concern is just making sure they have that extra time to cross. It'll be important. So thank you.
All right. Kyle Parkway at Lehman. Some of the unique design aspects of this is from Kyle Parkway is a six lane facility, as y'all are all well aware from the approach near the hospital as it comes up to Dacey. One of the things that we did in the design of this intersection is we merged two of the lanes on the eastbound leg toward Dacey Lane so that you bring the two lanes together so that you've got a two by two configuration at this intersection. Another feature is on that north leg that you can see something that's a little unusual there, there is what we call a slip lane that in that traffic engineering analysis, what the analysis said is there is a very heavy right turn volume at this intersection. So as a feature, and there's room there in the design, we were able to put in this effectively, it's a right turn lane. We call them slip lanes to where that right turn movement is taken out of the other two lanes and it's allowed to make that. The unique aspect here is you have three lanes going westbound back toward I-35 and we just channeled that into that outside curb lane. So it worked very well in this instance. Another thing that you'll note at this intersection is from the east side, the westbound approach, there is a dedicated left, which that's actually kind of unusual for a roundabout, but here it worked because of the turn volume that was noted. Again, going back to that traffic engineering analysis done before we even got into how this thing laid out and then a through and a right. So all of those aspects are considered in, as we've said multiple times, they end up being very unique to each one of the locations. So worked very well here for some unique features. All right, this one is Six Creeks at Old Stagecoach. And this is, I wish the underlying intersection showed up a little bit better, but it's a T on a curve. And then you have this unique little driveway coming in off the side that made for a very, very odd intersection. And the consultant did a very good job here of laying this out and making it a more conventional T intersection. And again, the predominant movement along Old Stagecoach coming into Six Creeks is that through movement. So again, they put a slip lane here, but there's also the need for the left turn, but they still allowed for that second through movement on that one leg. So that's very unique to this location as well. You have the two lanes coming out and then a single lane on the one leg there. So this is functionally what we would call a two by one. But again, it's a very, very unique design and works very well for the situation that was in the place prior to. All right, this is BB Road, and I told you we'd come back and correct the name there. It's Pastrano Parkway that extends to the south. And some of the unique features here at this location is, again, it is a two by one at a T. And there are some, they're not so obvious, but you can see them on the north side of the intersection, some of the land uses that we observed while we're in the design. In that leg there at the north edge, normally we would not allow driveways in that zone kind of between the splitter islands there. But because of the nature of the ones of residents and the other ones is a business and it has a traffic pattern that works very well for their use, it's actually a daycare. So what we included there was a, what we call a right in, right out driveway where you cannot make a left turn out of that driveway. The feature of the roundabouts reducing the speeds down to 20 miles an hour, again, that kind of school zone level speed allows for these people to enter and exit and still in that very busy zone, get in and out of their residences and the business. But some of the other things that we did here is we worked with the business at the southeast corner, maintained their driveways and didn't get into their site and affect their business operations. So ended up as a good implementation there. And another thing that you can see, the unique configuration of the old T intersection, we just slid the intersection back to the west a little bit to fit the space there so we didn't impact any of the existing land uses.
If I could just add real quick, in that specific area, and just to take note, that area, if there's ever a roundabout or fixing that needs to be done, that should be number one because it's just very, very heavy congested. Just know that there is a lot of heavy machinery and trucks that go through that intersection every single day. Because there are businesses that lead out to Yulin or lead out to 21 and they use this intersection a lot. So something to take note when you're looking at the construction of this, that you're looking at a heavy usage of large trucks that are going to be primarily using this intersection. So just keep it, keep in mind with that. I know you're doing studies, but it's very heavily used with dump trucks, 18 wheelers that actually go out that area.
And we actually have a slide, it's the very last slide, and we'll actually get into that a little bit. So we'll specifically address that. All right. This is one of the more unusual ones. And I will say that the consultant that laid this out, they did an extraordinary job. You have basically five legs to this intersection. A conventional intersection just does not work in this instance. Even a roundabout, it's difficult. And so they did something that is an extraordinary design feature. They took Cypress Road and Pump House Road and due to the vacant area at that side of the intersection, they connected the two and then from there extended the leg of the roundabout out to that intersection. And what it allows is the free flow of the traffic to move into the roundabout, into the queuing without backing it up into the roundabout itself. Very unique design feature. Other than that, it's a typical one by one, but it's got your pad crossings, et cetera. But that unique tool that they implemented there turned out to be a wonderful solution at this location. All right. Let's talk about this one. This is probably the one that has gotten the most scrutiny. This is the one at Bunton Creek and Lehman Road, there at Lehman High School. Going back to the very beginning of the design, again, go back to that traffic analysis that was done. This requires multi lanes in multiple directions in order to pass the traffic through out in the design year, not in the build year, but in the ultimate year. The consultant, and this is one of the features that is unique to a roundabout intersection, a typical cross intersection, it's going to look like a cross. The approach speeds, the design speeds are typically 45 miles an hour. The approach tangents usually extend several hundred feet and then from there you can start curving the roadway. If you were to put a conventional cross intersection at this location, just look at the north side of the intersection, it would make this a much more difficult design and I think it would cause a lot more problems. The roundabout allowed that north leg that trails off to the upper left here to take Lehman and skew it. Lehman and skew it back to the northwest to get it out of some of the land uses there and salvage most of what's there as far as existing land uses today. So it did a wonderful job of that. So it's got some other unique features. You can see the driveway that cuts from the building where the roof is, and it pulled one of their driveways, which was right in a very difficult area and provided more access at the northwest leg of the intersection. Another unique feature there, it includes one through lane today that allows for the through and the left along Bunton Creek and south along Lehman Road. And again, we talked about these slip lanes, it's basically a dedicated right, which is the predominant traffic movement on that southbound movement. So good job there. The other thing that you'll notice is, and we talked about improvements to intersections in the future, and this one with the spacing on that left, lower-left edge or the southwest corner, you can see that pavement widens out. The potential exists here that if the traffic volumes, that in the future, you could actually put two through lanes on that leg. So also looking at Lehman Road going northbound, you know, right now, it shows the old parking lot as it existed, where, you know, the marching band practice there, now they're building buildings there, and the band practice facility has moved south on the campus. But they laid this out to where we took as little of the property from the school to allow the proposed improvements to work as they had originally planned, but it also allows for a dedicated right at that location and your left and through. So again, the design consultant did a great job with that. The other thing to look at are the crosswalks, the nature of the roundabouts, this being a high school, as y'all mentioned, the pad crossings. The design speeds here, again, they bring those things, your typical through speeds into that 20 mile an hour range. You still have your school zone signage out there. I don't know whether Lehman has crossing guards or not, but one of the other aspects that a roundabout does, because you've got a lot of kids still driving to school, in high school, they're pretty new drivers, the slower speeds. So they're operating at slower speeds versus if we had a cross, they would be doing 45 miles an hour potentially through this. It dictates to them, in order to safely traverse this thing, they got to get down to those speeds. So it's going to be safer, not only for your everyday drivers, but even those high school-age kids that are your brand-new drivers. So that's one of the unique things that overall this roundabout location proved to be excellent design in relation to this specific location. It ended up very good. Any questions specifically on that one? That was a tough design.
Yes, thank you. That is in the District 6 area where I serve, and there had been numerous conversations I've had with residents at South Lake Ranch, that's right across. One of, again, a lot of it has to do with the safety features right by the high school. And this was even brought up to me by teachers, including the band director, when they have their competitions, they're going to have, 18-wheelers are going to come by, it's going to be like right-to-everybody intersection. But I think the majority of the concern in that area was the pedestrian traffic, like everybody's hitting on. Especially at 11 o'clock at night, on a Friday night, when football games are done in the band and everybody comes back, you've got a lot of kids that leave and walk across the street at Steeplechase, and they walk across the street at Lehman, I mean, to South Lake. So the concern that one of the residents had brought up was that you can see the continuous flow with the traffic, and what has helped was the stoplights that actually stopped the traffic to where people can gauge, the students can gauge to run across the street and be able to make it safely. So I think the design structure is going to be very important, especially with the lighting that's in the area. And again, it would also have to be educating the students that are utilizing it, said, hey, look, this, here's the actual crosswalk now. So that's a good idea, and that's a good plan, because I know they cross the street from Lehman Straight to Lake Washington. So, but as long as, like what Councilmember Rezo says, as long as we can be able to use the current technology as far as using engineering for the speed cushions, lighting, and other features, safety features that we can bring in this area, I think it can ease some of the concerns that the residents have in that area, in those two major neighborhoods, and for the students as well, because that was one of the biggest concerns, like I said, they've had. And also, in the event that a resident asks, are there any current studies that you have that you can show how these kind of roundabouts in a school, near a school facility, has worked and the success rate on that?
I'll let, one of the things I wanted to bring up, you know, particularly with you mentioning, again, you know, with the two-lane crossings here. So each one of these legs is going to have the rapid flashing beacons, and again, they're pedestrian-actuated. So it's the same feature that you have at a signalized intersection. This intersection will have that on these three legs, because the, and we haven't mentioned ProWag, and I can't even tell you what that stands for, but it refers to a lot of the ADA requirements relative to pedestrian crossings and things like that. And it stipulates that if you have two through lanes, you must implement a rapid flashing beacon at that location, as we mentioned earlier. So it will have that. So it's very similar to what you would have had at a signalized intersection. It does the same thing. So again, pedestrian-actuated, it starts flashing, again, they have that unique feature of only having to look one way to start the crossing, hit that refuge island, and then from there, look the other direction. So they're just naturally going to be safer crossings because of those features. But as far as schools, Mike, do we know anything?
Yeah, I think, I mean, there are numerous locations, many parts of the country where roundabouts next to school, I know Carmel has few, a lot of communities in Indiana, they actually have that. And again, what Steve mentioned, the type of features you put in there to make sure that you are providing that positive environment for pedestrians, young drivers, young kids crossing, maybe the crosswalk to get to school, I think that can be done. So again, this is part of maybe consideration in the design to make sure that we are accounting for that. Again, goes back into one of those where it's part of the design process, so.
Okay, we're down to our final slide. Okay, we mentioned design, well, we mentioned trucks, emergency services vehicles, I think the gentleman that spoke before about the ESD 5 site. One of the thing, and I will say this, the reason we put this in, because it's an exhibit that we already had made, but each of these roundabouts is designed to pass a WB67, that's the biggest tractor-trailer rigs that you see out on the interstates. So moving vans to get to homes, every one of these roundabouts will pass one of these vehicles. What we intended with this was to show that, you know, in the design, that truck apron, which hasn't gotten a lot of attention, it is one of the features that is unique to the roundabouts, that it allows those rear trailing wheels section, it tends to travel inside of the path of the cab, and that's the intent of those truck islands, is to allow, like in this instance, the trucks are actually able to stay in the lanes themselves. Now, at the roundabouts, they're not necessarily designed that way, but they still will allow these vehicles to pass. I think he mentioned a ladder trek at the ESD 5 site. We actually shortened one of the splitter islands to accommodate the different apparatus in that ESD 5 site, so that they could make the turns in and out of their bays at the Go Fourth North intersection. So yes, these designs do accommodate school buses, very large trucks, and all of our emergency services vehicles. And that's what we have. Any more questions?
More questions?
I guess my thing is, is from a city standpoint, when we start the construction on roads, how long do you think most of these roundabouts would take as far as the construction?
Yeah, so, and I might ask my GEC to help me answer that question, but I think it really goes along with the whole roadway project itself. And so, you know, for example, I think it's, we're looking at 18 months on Kohler's and BB combined, and so that tends to be kind of the timeframe, these projects are big projects, and so these roundabouts are getting built as part of those roadway corridor projects. And so, you know, it could be a year, it could be 18 months, it could be closer to 24 months, depending on the length of the roadway, how many of these intersections are included. So it, but we do see most of these coming online as we enter 2027, 2028, because most of our construction will begin in 2026 for these projects. And as we mentioned, Kohler's and BB are already under construction.
Right.
I don't, actually. I mean, you come in pretty good, so it really varies depending on the actual roadway project. You know, that kind of dictates the overall schedule. So, you know, the roundabouts are just a part of that construction. So, you know, the 18 months, 24 months, sometimes shorter depending on if it's a smaller project or segment, so.
I just wanted to add, like Mike, on these projects like BB Road, where we're taking the S-turn out, we're going to build, we're going to work more on the construction before we even take out that S-turn, right? The S-turn will probably be the last thing we do. I'm pretty sure y'all have already contemplated that, but I just wanted the public to know that we'll probably build that straightaway before we take the S-turn out of BB Road.
Yes, the traffic control sequencing for the roadway project does exactly what you mentioned. The construction is basically going to build the proposed alignment and lead the existing roadway in place for traffic to continue as it does today. Then when we get sufficient pavement to put two lane, one lane in each direction, we'll actually switch the traffic to the new alignment. But otherwise, the existing roadway will still operate as it does today while they're building the rest of that. So, yeah, so we've taken all those things into consideration.
I appreciate it. I know we're going to get a lot of calls moving forward in the next year with all the construction going on over Kyle, so everything we can do to just alleviate some of that frustration from residents will be important. So thank y'all for looking forward, looking to help alleviate that headache to the minimal as we could. It's great.
Yes, I think across the board, the consultants, you have done a good job.
Sounds good.
That's good.
Anybody else?
Do we have anything else, Brian?
Yeah, just one other thing I want to mention is, we do have in the back of the room, kind of an open house setup. We have all the roundabouts that we're including as part of the Road Bond project on boards in the back, and so invite you and invite our community members who are here to go in the back, and we have staff on hand. All of this team will be here on hand to answer any questions the folks have, and we have a lot more information about roundabouts in the back of the room, and we'll be here until 8:30.
And Brian, we done?
Yes, sir. Just thanks again for the time. As Mike mentioned, there's lots of materials in the back, lots of information, so we encourage everyone to take a moment to take a look at that, ask any questions that you have. Also, go to kylebonds.com, there's additional information there as well about all of these roundabouts, as well as all of the road segments that have been mentioned tonight. So we appreciate your time.
I want to thank y'all for the presentation, it was great. I'm glad that we were able to bring out a lot of information. Hopefully this helped the viewing public that was out there and councilmembers as well. I hope we all learned a little bit from y'all's presentation, I know I did, so thank y'all very much, great presentation, gentlemen.
We do have a motion to adjourn.
With that being said, do we have a motion to adjourn? Thank you.